And next, we can move on to approving the agenda.
Before we prove the agenda, I'd like to add, let's say item number 10C, discussion of the request for quote for portable radar speed signs.
Okay, is everybody okay with adding portable radar speed signs to the agenda?
Yes, I'll second it, I need to second it.
Okay, all in favor of adding portable radar speed signs as number 10C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we'll talk about that, thank you, Mr. Light. So.
The addition, do we need to?
Well, there was an emotion, you had said, you know, before we get to approving anything. So now we need a motion with the amended agenda.
With that addition, make a, or a move to accept the agenda for regular meeting dated, I guess, 10th, 2020.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have support, all in favor of approving the agenda with the amendment of 10C, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's added. Next is to approve or amend the minutes from the regular council meeting from June 29th, 2020, and also the regular council meeting from July 13th, 2020.
Make the motion to accept both minutes as presented, support.
So we have a motion and support, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes done. Next, we, because I walked in a little late, we don't have a treasurer report. Okay, we need to get one of those. We need to see that, so. That should be on, next. In the next meeting, September's.
I'll discuss that with you tomorrow.
Right, right, no, I know that there's circumstances behind it, so. Then next is the payment of the bills and transfers for July 2020.
Motion to approve check register for the Village of Goodrich dated 7/1/2020 through 7/31/2020.
Support.
Ooh.
Okay, so all in favor of approving the bills and transfers for July 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, bills and transfers done. Now, we will move on to public comment, and Lankowski, is that?
Yes, I can't believe you.
Even with a mask, I recognize the voice, so. She didn't have to speak first before this even started, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give her the honor of being first public comment. I'm gonna kinda go off, are you speaking about anything on the agenda?
No, honey.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this as an exception, just because we are over capacity to allow her to speak. Typically, this public comment is for agenda items only, so after Ms. Lankowski's comment, I'm gonna stick it to just what's on the agenda. Address the chair, three minutes, be nice to everybody, and as I always say, let's keep it classy, Goodrich. So, the floor is yours.
Thank you. If you guys don't know me, my daughter Genevieve was the one that was on American Idol, and I'm also the one that lost Corinne, so we're kind of, the community kinda knows who we are. And we've been asked, like, yesterday, we were in the Flushing Riverfront, singing there, and we're always singing in Davison, and honestly, I don't like driving everywhere, my heart is, you know, I live here, so my heart is here, and I was wondering if I could use, like, maybe once a week, go to the, where the park is on Hagel Road, just while the weather's good. And we have our own sound system, just to invite everybody and just use the park if anybody wants to just come and hear some singing, and I don't know if that's even allowed or not, but I was called to ask if we could do that, just as a, like, as a ministry to the public. And we always go to the nursing homes and stuff, honestly, and we can't do anything now, and I just can't sit home anymore. I can do something, so if I can't do it here, I'm gonna end up doing it somewhere else, but I prefer to do it here, so. If that's okay with everybody, I'd love to, once a week, just post it and have everybody meet up at the park, whoever wants to come.
What is the status of that?
They're in the process of putting the fence back up right now, the town is, they still have to come out and receive, so it's not really open yet.
It's not really open yet?
No.
Is there another place, or not really, not around here?
Have you checked with the school using the ballpark over there for anything?
I didn't check with the school.
Yeah, in the interim, until the park is, you know, so it's not, you know, muddy, and once it's finally complete, I would suggest checking with the school. And then, once the park is complete, I mean, it's.
Okay. Is it okay to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I propose that, like?
Be a sample of the views in first here.
Yeah, thank you.
All you have to do is YouTube, Genevieve, but you will, you will not be disappointed, they only have to set a long timer.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate, okay, I'll leave you guys alone. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you, you too, thanks for stopping in.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, now, public comment for agenda items only.
It's on the agenda.
Anybody?
That's on the agenda. Yeah, it is. Oh.
Okay, so, no public comments, okay. Now, reports, the administrator.
The server security wall from IT right will be installed tomorrow afternoon. And with COVID, I'd like to set our hours, the same hours every day, eight to five, and then 12 to four on Friday, still be 40 hours, but instead of eight to six on Monday, and eight to four on Wednesday, it would be eight to five, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight to five. And then Thursday, or Friday, 12 to eight to 12. I have no objections.
For a working person like myself, I would not be able to make it there by five, so it's six o'clock.
Oh, no, I'm suggesting your meeting is still be six.
No, I.
I agree, yeah, I think if you change it to anything, it'd be nine to six at anything, but you gotta accommodate the public, because they mostly work those time periods, and stay open to six, helps a lot of people.
So you want to stay to the six o'clock?
I don't see a.
Yeah, nine to six for four days, and then the last four hours, whether it be
eight to twelve, nine to one, four to four.
Stay the same way then, we'll just stay the same.
Because if you're, if you're missing, if someone's missing an hour worth, you ain't gonna be making it up now.
Right.
It's straight 40 hours.
I received notification from our health insurance carrier that next year's premium will be increasing by approximately seven percent, but we've budgeted for it. Currently, the village pays for three cell phones through Sprint, which will be canceled starting next month. The phones were used by the DPW staff and the building department secretary. All three employees prefer to use their own personal cell phones instead, so.
Were those, were those the ones that were going through that system, where it was like, how many phone calls we were getting in?
Yeah, legal compliance issue, and the lawyer said, because they were using a personal phone cell phone, that could be taken as public information anytime, regardless of personal or not, since they're using it for work times. That's why we went and bought work phones for them, so they could do work stuff.
Work stuff.
So that's, I would check with a lawyer.
All your problems with doing work stuff on a personal phone that makes the phone discoverable, and you have anything on the content, and I mean, it is.
I guess.
Well, not anything on the content, that would be, that would be permissible, would be what had to do with the business, not your personal stuff.
No, everything's.
Whatever is on that phone is discoverable.
I think just to be employee's safe, I would recommend them having a work phone, not a.
I guess I'd, I'd say, let's run it up with Mr. Winship and see what he's, if he's good with them doing work business on a personal phone, you know, whom I, you know, as long as he's good with it, you know, run it by him, get an opinion on what he has to say, because I'd hate to see something happen, or heaven forbid, you know, a lawsuit happens, and their personal phone, their personal information, their personal emails come out, because this is discoverable in a lawsuit, because work.
Well, they brought them to.
Emails, work texts, work phone calls.
They weren't using them, so.
No, I understand, and I appreciate.
But if you don't want them canceled.
No, I appreciate them coming and trying to save the cost, and I appreciate the convenience that that would be for them, I just hate to see, I hate to have them opened up for for something to come out that they might not necessarily want.
Any other issue we had, when they did have the personal, the office paid part of their personal cell phones, that was another issue that came up.
Yeah, this came up before.
Yeah, it was twenty, it was twenty-five dollars a month. Township pays fifty dollars a month.
So once we pay for it, that's our property, for the most part, in terms of having to seize it.
Right.
If it was a personal phone.
Yeah, this came up before, and we've gone different ways at different times.
Wow, then I guess I need to stop using, because I've been using my personal ones through all of this.
Yeah, it's, it's, what Mr. Light says, it doesn't do up to responsibility, so.
Right, and they, they wanted us to, you know, the sheriff's department, you have to be careful what you do on your work computers, be careful what you do for work on your personal phones, things along that.
I, I think the important thing that came up last time, one of the times that we talked about this, is that if village business is conducted on a personal phone, it also has to be conducted on village equipment, separate from personal phones, which is redundant, ridiculous. Why, why, why would you do it twice? But you can't have just, remembering back, you can't have just one path of village information going through a personal.
Can't hear, man. Yeah, timeout, I don't, I, I. Okay, right, no, because that'll be the next thing that comes on. Play timeout. I don't know, I don't know if everybody can hear. Linda, can you hear me, Miss Air?
Not well.
Not well. I know, I know, I know, where's the, where's the peanut butter? So basically, I will check with Attorney Winship tomorrow about the cell phone, I'll note that. And then, it was brought to my attention that the friendship path is being overgrown with poison ivy, so we're, the DPW is getting a quote to get that eradicated. So in the meantime, we're asking people, please don't use it, because it's covered with poison ivy. In the past, I remember, since the DPW handle, like, the weed control.
I guess it's out of, I guess it's out of, according to them, it's out of control.
It's out of control.
It's there.
I got it all over in my yard.
So, once it's under control, would they pick back up on control?
Are they still mowing it, so that the path?
As I know, yeah, but it's like, just everywhere. We did get the signs up, the no swimming.
Okay.
That's up. And that's it, folks, for me.
Okay. Next, street administrator, have you got anything on, any word on the streets?
Not on the streets, I just see him working on the fence, trying to finish up the fence around the basketball court today. Hopefully, we can get that planted and open it up for use soon. I thought that they had already sprayed tycoa seed down, but it looks, it looks like it had either.
They did, they're gonna have to do it again.
Are you gonna say it looks like it had either washed away, or?
Yes.
Okay.
They lost the beauty.
Yeah. Before the meeting, there was some discussion about Pacer studies, and Sherry's gonna look into that as far as in order and cost of getting things done. I don't think there was anything else that I wanted to cover.
And I sent out the bids to five different companies for the transportation asset plan, that we're gonna try to, you know, incorporate, we're gonna order our higher companies to create this plan for us, so we can do all these things.
Right.
And then find, and then keep doing it to keep these things up to date.
Any information back yet?
No, by the end of, they've got till the end of the month.
Okay.
Okay, anything? Okay, next is DPW activity report. But I'm not seeing DPW. So, that'll be. Code enforcement activity report, I'm happy to see that this is becoming more frequent. The only thing that I would ask for, if you guys could contact the code enforcer, is to do another drive-through for, like, tall grass weeds, and like trash laying out, especially the, the home that is being used as a business. Yeah, so, that needs to be addressed, have we heard anything back?
I talked to him about that, and he keeps referring to the previous attorney, that years ago, or something, he'd written, had written a letter to these people about it. Do you, am I supposed to contact the previous attorney about this? Or do you want me to get ahold of our current attorney?
Get ahold of the current attorney, because the previous attorney, I've had trouble getting ahold of, he doesn't return phone calls. So, let's, let's use our, our new attorney, and because it's, it's awful. And the people that live on that street don't deserve that, nor the people that live across the street from that. Okay.
Comment?
Yes.
I'm not gonna make a comment now on the code enforcer report, I'd like to cover that in council comment at the end.
Okay.
I'll bring this back up.
Okay. So, next is the building activity report. We had three permits open for a total for the year of eighteen permits. Two residential permits were open. Total permit fees have been eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. So, although slow, things are still happening in the village with buildings. Cash receipts report, anybody, anybody got any questions, comments on cash receipts report? Okay, we will move past the cash receipts report, then our fire department and sheriff's department are busy workers. Although I'm happy that the reports aren't getting any thicker, I wish that they were getting a little thinner. But it's good to see that we have, I mean, if anything, this shows that we do have police presence within the community, which is nice. Then, the dam committee report, who will be speaking on the dam committee?
I guess I can. So really, other than, you know, our, our first meeting that we had, we haven't really, really done anything. We have a meeting this week with Wake Crum and the state of Michigan, the guy that's responsible for the dams in Michigan. We're gonna meet at the dam and go through and take a look at the dam, and probably go over all the last dam report. But the whole purpose of the meeting, I wanted to get that meeting scheduled with the people on the committee and Sherry, because the last time anything had happened with the dam was, you know, back, I don't know, 2014, somewhere in there. And then, you know, we've been through several council changes since then, and we've been through administrative changes since then. So that purpose of that meeting is kind of bringing everybody back up to where we're at in regards to the dam, to give us some past history on the dam, and to discuss, you know, options moving forward, possibly, you know, where grant money can be obtained from, and so forth. So, until we have this meeting, which will be this week, we'll probably start to have regular meetings after that, and start to collect information in regards to doing something with the dam.
Okay, wonderful. Speaking of the dam, did they come and do the repair on the dam? Do you know when that was supposed to take place? Not to my knowledge, but yeah, okay. Okay. Has the pond been sprayed?
Yeah, it was today.
Today, it was kind of a waste of money.
Okay. So, next.
If we can go back, I think this was supposed to cover under.
Oh. Oh, okay, back to code enforcement. Lippy's Ice Cream Shop, the new place in town. If you notice on page two of the pictures, there is a picnic table that impedes the sidewalk and is also very close to the handicap section of parking. Page three is the grassy side of the building, that, that picnic table, that's, that's Lippy's property, where they could use that area, they could realistically have a few picnic tables there, if not more. So, I think.
Six feet apart.
Yeah, six feet apart, wash your hands. And then, the, the areas that are, are going like further away into, like, towards the high school, that is too spooky. So the area where they could put the picnic table, the flat area on the second page, would be ideal. So I think we should have the code enforcer, or, you know, the village itself, make the phone call to ask them to move those picnic tables, so it's not one impeding a sidewalk, not obstructing with a handicap parking space, and, you know, it's a grassy area. I mean, if people are spilling ice cream or something, you know, it's on a lawn, and that.
Just to be clear, we approved cranberries for sidewalk, which is impeding the sidewalk as well.
I can still get around that, there's still sidewalk to use there, but they're not impeding in handicap parking though either, cranberries isn't.
I mean, you're trying to use a public phone call.
Right, that's what. Right, right, no, I mean, we can politely ask them to, to move the picnic table to the grassy area on the side.
Suggest.
Pardon?
Suggest.
Yes. Yeah, so, if a phone call could be made to, to Lippy's on our behalf. Thank you, okay.
Great ice cream, by the way.
Yeah, I haven't been there.
Field trip.
Yeah, yeah, field trip. Okay, so unfinished business is the next thing, which we don't have any of. New business is a doc resolution number 2020-10 to authorize the Pines of Goodrich to continue the operation maintenance and administrative responsibilities of their particular drinking water supply under state permit.
Okay, before we go back, go forward, I think there's another code enforcement issue on these pages, I don't know if it's a different spot. Those clinical signs, and why you're.
Oh, those, I think he had them listed, that he was, I think those were just pictures of the signs that he had listed on here, signs, signs, signs. No, it was just pictures to show where they were and where they were moved to.
Okay.
Yeah. But thank you. Okay, so back to the resolution to the ponds, the ponds, the pines, to continue with their administration of their water supply under state permit.
Make a motion to support resolution number 2020-10, Village of Goodrich, this county of Michigan.
Support.
So we have a motion and support, so can we do roll call on the approval of the resolution, please?
Baraco.
Yes.
Shimotaro.
Yes.
Light.
Yes.
MacAbby.
Yes.
McCafferty.
Yeah. Okay, next. Approve subrecipient agreement between the county of Genesee and Village of Goodrich to utilize community development block grant funds from August 1st, 2020, to July 31st, 2021, in the amount of four thousand three hundred and seven dollars.
Where can we use that money for, to split the school?
For the seniors, education, transportation, take them to doctor appointments, many things, helping them with glasses, hearing aids, many things.
And this is, like, every year, almost every year?
It's for every three, it's three years, we had, we got it for this year, we'll get it for next year, we'll get it one more year.
Right, and recycles if they have the money.
And every year, we have to do this subrecipient agreement, it's just paper.
That's still paper, you got it every year.
Correct.
Make a motion to approve the subrecipient agreement between the county of Genesee and the Village of Goodrich to utilize community development block grant funds from August 1st, 2020, to July 31st, 21, in the amount of four thousand three hundred and seven dollars.
So we have a motion and support, and another resolution, roll call, please.
McCafferty.
Yes.
MacAbby.
Yes.
Light.
Yes.
Shimotaro.
Yes.
Baraco.
Yes.
Okay, done. Next was the added item, the portable radar sign, this for Light.
It looks like we've got a bid sheet from the Genesee County Road Commission, purchasing division, request for quote, portable radar speed signs, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like three signs, one additional universal mount bracket.
They're solar charged.
And this, this is a unit similar to what the sheriff's department puts out there on the card, or is this a unit to mount on?
It would be mounted on one of the signs, you know, like the speed limit sign, right below the speed limit sign.
Okay.
And then, as someone's driving, it would show them what their speed is.
Okay.
And if you recall. And if you recall, not too long before COVID hit, I got the quotes for these.
Right.
And they were like seven thousand dollars a piece.
A piece.
A piece. So you can get three of them right now from the county for nine thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, so.
Right.
I brought this to you. Pretty considerable.
If someone asked why, like, back when we started, just why do we need three? Well, if it gets to a point, we could always loan to Davison or Ortonville and have some kind of agreement with them.
Well, we have, we have a lot of issues with um, East Eagle.
Right.
Ridge.
And West Eagle.
West Eagle, so.
But they could be a little drought.
And they can be, absolutely, absolutely, yes, they can be.
Let me say that I'm down here and somebody's talking to me while I'm working about traffic, it's, it's East and West Eagle and Ridge, the, those seem to be the problem areas where we've got people flying through there, and i- as hard as these guys are working to um, regulate it, they can be everywhere all the time, um, you know, we, we try and do as many warnings as we can, we try and do, you know, educate somebody on a traffic staff, but, you know, maybe a little public chaining, as you're driving down the road, car in front of you, car behind you sees how fast you're going, you know, or if nothing else, just to make people aware of when people come through these areas.
I'm gonna.
I think would be beneficial to say.
Yeah, I'm gonna play devil's advocate. Um, how effective are these signs truly in controlling people from, like, from speeding and, and doing the speed limit? Because I would, to me, um, like, once you start seeing something regularly, you don't notice it anymore. You know, even though that these are portable, like, if I start seeing, you know, you know, thirty-five or forty-five or whatever it is that I'm driving, I mean, eventually, that's just gonna become part of the scenery to me, so how, how effective are these in like slowing, slowing your traffic down? Opposed to, I know if I, um, when my kids were little, I, one of them was screaming in the car, and I was flying down M fifteen to get home to get a sippy cup, and thankfully, the officer gave me a warning, because I don't think he wanted to listen to my kid in the car screaming either, but thankfully, he gave me a warning, and now I, forty-five, fifty-five of M fifteen, I'm, you know, it took, it took one time for me.
I wish I could quote this study or.